Now seven o'clock and I'd like to call the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five Planning Board Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand with me, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item number two, the invocation. If you'll please all bow your heads for me, I guess say the invocation. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and gather on behalf of the town. We'd like to ask for your blessing over this meeting and would also like to ask for your guidance and direction in decisions we make tonight. For us, in your name we pray. Amen. Okay, item number three is the approval of the June twenty third, twenty twenty five, and the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review those. If there are no additions or corrections, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further corrections or no corrections, I'll make a motion. We approve.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, on to the regular agenda item. First up is the case R E Z twenty one dash zero five, twenty five dash zero one Walbrook Flats. Michael, that's you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Mike Elbarger, I'm the interim planning director. I'll be doing the staff presentation this evening. The applicant representative and developer are here this evening also for this case and they have a presentation prepared. We also have Matthew Peach with StanTech who performed the traffic info, T I A study for this project. So he can do part of the presentation for the staff if you like. Quickly to, to go over what these properties are that are subject to this rezoning request. Two unaddressed properties and forty seven twenty four Burlington Mills. They are on both sides of what will be the new alignment of the Burlington Mills Road. Just, let's see, west of South Main Street with that new configuration. That's very close to coming. The total acreage is fifteen point six one acres. We'll, we'll look at this concept plan on the screen here for guidance. The colorful side or the left side there. That property is zoned in R H residential high density conditional zoning district. This actually came through the planning board and the town board about two years ago. It's for a senior assisted living type use called Arden, which did not get fulfilled. The other property, which, let's see, how do I go? It's tract B, it's that gray area there, plus there's a small other unaddressed property contiguous with that. Those are zoned a general commercial G C conditional zoning district. And those go back to the original Walbrook rezoning in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So these three properties combined are proposing to go to a town center conditional zoning or T C C Z zoning district. Town center is a mixed use zoning district. The proposed uses are for multifamily and commercial development. For kind of reference sake, the applicant has named these two majority sites here. Site area A, which is the left, which is the colorful one. Site area B, which is that gray squarish property. Multifamily is the desired use on the left or site area A piece of property. And then future commercial development on the east or site area B. And at the bottom there are the previous reference cases. M A twenty two ten was for that Arden assisted senior living project. And then M A twenty one zero nine for the Walbrook properties. Here we have an excerpt from the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan. That brown area, that is the site area A. This is currently planned for high density residential. That high density residential goes back just a few years ago from when that rezoning case was approved. This area was originally called out for commercial future land use, but when the Board of Adjustment, or sorry, Board of Commissioners approved that rezoning request, it changed the future land use designation to high density residential. Then site area B is commercial. And again, this area was identified in the future land use plan originally as industrial. But when the general commercial zoning was approved by the Board of Commissioners, that changed that future land use to commercial. So this is a future land use change from high density residential and commercial. Community transportation plan here, we have a little excerpt and then this is the small area there, Burlington Mills Road. Again, we see that that's identified for a four lane median divided road. And there's again a new alignment that's almost close to opening up, which will bring it to a new intersection at South Main Street. This does include curb and gutter bicycle lanes and sidewalks. The greenway bicycle plans do recommend greenway and side pass in this area. Burlington Mills is identified to have a ten foot side path along it and a greenway connection to Rollsville Middle School. Some of those details are to be determined based on feasibility. Staff looked at the comprehensive plan consistency for this. Again, that western or left property site area A is high density residential. And the request is to develop high density residential under the town center zoning district. The future land use category of high density residential really speaks to more like a six to twelve density unit, units per acre. The applicant's project overall comes in at about sixteen point nine fleshed out over the entirety of the zoning district. So it's, it is slightly higher than the future land use category. The vehicular circulation network here, of course, Burlington Mills Road goes right between these two tracks that are subject to the rezoning. And that's a arterial, arterial roadway, four lane median divided plan. And again, side paths and greenways do come through this area in a few locations. Traffic impact analysis was done by StanTech for this. The recommendations for improvements are actually the same as for that, that residential care facility, project M A twenty two ten. I'm not going to go into these details, but I'm going to let Matt, you know, speak to these if, if you'd like to get into more details on these and that those, the differences basically between the already entitled properties, or sorry, projects that these properties have versus this new proposal. With the delta really being the change to multifamily on site area A where, again, it was a senior residential care facility type of use that was reviewed and approved. The staff recommendation is for generally approval. It is generally consistent with the future land use. Certainly those categories of high density residential and commercial are being met by the town center zoning district and the commitment of land uses there. The density proposed is higher in the site area A than the future land use would propose. So this would ultimately include, be the, the Board of Commissioners approving a higher density than the future land use does espouse for this area. One thing to understand with this project or this rezoning is that these properties are entitled. They are entitled to certain things. Again, the, the site area A is entitled for, I think the project was a hundred and sixty four residential care beds, which is not necessarily multifamily, but it is a pretty significant development. And then site area B was approved for commercial uses through the original Walbrook development. And again, the applicants can speak to some of those entitlements that are there. So this rezoning is not from vacant unentitled farm fields, for instance, like some projects you see. They are from certain entitled projects to a new vision of an entitled project here. We can bring up Matt now if you'd like to hear more about the T I A or let the applicant do their presentation. And as questions and answers come around the traffic impacts, Matt, Matt could speak to this.
Okay. You want to hear from applicant or traffic engineer? Anybody have a preference first? Yeah, let's get the applicant up. Board of Representatives.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. I'm Mark Frederick with Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Crosland Southeast. I'm joined by Austin Williams with Crosland Southeast and Laura Hallman with McAdams. Mr. Elbarger did a great job explaining the details of this case, so I'll be brief. I'll also be joined up at the podium by Austin Williams in a, in a minute. So the purpose of this rezoning is to update the zoning of the property to align with the, the objectives of the comprehensive plan for development along the Main Street corridor. Again, the purpose is to allow an apartment community updating that, that zoning to the town center district and really also allowing commercial services and amenities directly off of Main Street. As you know, the infrastructure along Main Street is actively being constructed to support a walkable vibrant town, vibrant town center. But the other ingredient needed for a vibrant, walkable town center are the people and the services. This project will allow a substantial amount of residents to live with direct walkable access to the Main Street corridor, but also allow commercial services to be built and build on the, what's already being constructed with the Walbrook development today. So the, as Mr. Elbarger also said, the current zoning for this property allows residential on the western parcels and commercial along the eastern parcel. We're updating that zoning to the town center district, but generally carrying forward the same use classifications. So those western parcels will be going from residential care to multifamily. The density is increasing from one sixty four up to right around two hundred and sixty. And then the commercial uses on the parcel along Main Street are generally staying the same, but will have the same use restrictions or the use restrictions required by the town center district to be more consistent with the uses the town wants to see along the Main Street. So the concept plan, which is a zoning condition of this project, identifies the residential uses on those western parcels. Again, multifamily uses carrying forward the, the same general residential uses as the current zoning. We are currently showing four story buildings, apartment buildings on that parcel. The use, specific uses to be developed on the eastern parcel along Main Street haven't been determined yet, but that's why we're designating it for that town center district. Again, we have several zoning conditions with this project. The first is just to ensure that development of the property will be consistent with its concept plan. We've also included a maximum on the amount of residential units permitted at two hundred and eighty. The current plan shows about two hundred and sixty, but we've built in a little bit of flexibility as the, the full design of the site comes into play. And then finally, the third condition does place a few additional use restrictions on that commercial parcel. These are uses that wouldn't necessarily be compatible along Main Street, so just placing those additional use restrictions. In terms of what is recommended by the town's comprehensive plan, because these parcels were recently rezoned, their future land use map designations have also been updated recently. Those residential parcels, those that, the comprehensive plan designates those parcels for that high density residential uses. Again, what we're proposing is consistent with that. We are increasing the density a little bit, but we believe this is appropriate along that Main Street corridor. And then that commercial parcel is designated for commercial uses. So bringing that, that zoning up to town center is consistent with the, the town's comprehensive plan. There's also the Main Street Vision Plan within the comprehensive plan that calls for residential, a mix of residential and commercial uses along this town center corridor. We believe this, this project is consistent with those recommendations. But at this point, I'll ask Austin Williams to come up to speak a little more about the Walbrook development as a whole and the vision for this project.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Good to see you once again. I'll try and keep my comments light and be happy to answer any questions that you have. But I've mentioned before in, in previous planning board meetings that our involvement in Rollsville and particularly with the Walbrook project started with the Main Street Vision Plan in two thousand and eighteen, where I was invited to be a panelist as a, as a developer member. And the outcome of the Main Street Vision Plan actually included within the primary kind of under construction portions of the Walbrook project, a thousand residential units and associated commercial. At the urging of folks in, in Rollsville, we've, of course, leaned quite heavily into the commercial uses with the Publix and a lot more to come. And those, the master plan is illustrated here with Walbrook flats shown as part of that, so I can respond any questions you have about it. But my point in bringing that up is that with the commercial comes jobs and, and with jobs comes need for housing. And the types of jobs that we're creating in, in Rollsville, the retail jobs typically are more likely to be multifamily in nature as opposed to single family. The greenways of which we've established about a mile and a half that we've either built and funded as part of the Main Street project or have approved on, on paper today and are soon to come are built to accommodate, you know, walkability for folks that are getting groceries, that are going throughout Rollsville and the access to services. And, you know, I know that generally that there's some concern in, in folks in residence and, and elected officials in Rollsville about opening up the gate to multifamily all over town. And, but also know that there's an understanding and a desire to have multifamily in the right locations. And having dedicated the, the right of way on our behalf for the Burlington Mills Road, which hadn't opened yet, you know, by creating that frontage, we have a unique opportunity that we're not, for the most part, building this across from existing uses and we're building it across from uses that we're actually putting into play commercial. And with the announcement that Wake Med has come into town, potentially with some scale over the long term, we feel like this is consistent with the Main Street vision and very much consistent with best practices of planning. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of me.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff or the applicants? Or the traffic engineer? We can call Mr. Peach up?
Yes, apartments, right?
Yes, yes. Roughly a two bedroom in today's market would be close to two thousand a month. One bedroom would be, you know, maybe four to five hundred dollars less.
Are these just planned to be one and two bedroom units only?
Um, there may be some three bedrooms. It will be really determined by the market, but primarily one and, one and two bedroom units. Yes, sir. Primarily two bedrooms, meaningfully, till leaning towards two bedrooms.
Any studio?
Not, hadn't been determined at this time, but pretty likely. Yeah, understood. We have found that, that there's a, a big difference between, you know, this would be considered suburban garden style multifamily. As soon as you put it close to services like walkability to tap rooms and restaurants and a Publix, all of a sudden you can rent a broom closet. I mean, that's my colloquialism for a small unit. So we would make them as small as we feel like the market could accept, a portion of them as small and affordable as we feel like the market can absorb. But, you know, there is a pretty high construction cost here as well that we have to be mindful of.
Yeah, I, I think what's, to kind of belabor the point here a little bit, I think one of the things that's important from my perspective is, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of single family, a lot of town homes come into the area. They're all going to be two, three bedroom types of facilities. And I know we keep talking about diversity of housing. And so far, what I see a lot of is really just the diversity of the structure and not of the internal design of them. And that's why I bring up studios, because I think Rollsville needs to start understanding how it can be a transition community. In, in, in other words, people can move here as a single person, be a police officer, be a teacher, be somebody who's a nurse or something working at Wake Med and can come in as a single person at a low affordable rent and then meet their love or whatever, and then, and then stay in Rollsville and be able to have the kind of diversity. So that's why I'd like to see to the point, I'd like to see a lot more studio and more affordable, single person type of housing. So that, that's why I'd like to see a little bit more of that in, in there if possible, if the market holds it.
Point taken. And I think that the adjacency of a medical facility in particular really does, you know, push us in that direction of strong consideration of smaller units. In case it's not obvious, our plans are conceptual. And, you know, essentially best case for, you know, putting units on the ground or frankly, a groundbreaking is twenty twenty seven, potentially late twenty twenty six, but most likely twenty twenty seven. So there'll be a lot of work to take the conceptual plan once, if we're successful in the rezoning to do a much deeper dive in the market to fine tune that mix, but we'll take the requests for smaller units to heart.
What type of commercial services are you thinking?
Well, certainly medical office. And, you know, our plan as approved in the, in the zoning now for the Main Street tract has medical office and retail. Currently, as we transition to a town center zoning, if the zoning is successful, it's going to require us to bring those buildings closer to the street and have more transparency for those buildings, which we think is appropriate. Right now, we feel like there's a really good chance that we will go one hundred percent medical office on those buildings. So we have a plan that we're working on that's about sixty five to seventy thousand rentable square feet. There are a number of practices and, and medical practices that are not currently represented in Rollsville that people are driving elsewhere to that have started to show interest. If we didn't have so many more opportunities for development around the site, we would feel like there's a big opportunity cost to not do retail on the site just because retail would typically, I believe in this location, have a better return. Like if we were to turn that site into three or four out parcels and do multi tenant shops, I think it's probably a better economic outcome. But we have opportunities to expand our retail across the street. So if I were to predict right now, I would say that it's a hundred percent medical office of multiple practices.
Would there be any kind of permanent fencing material between the school and the development?
I think a fence would be appropriate. We've not reflected that yet on our plans. And actually, to be honest, I'm, I, I don't know offhand, but the zoning category may actually require that.
I think it does.
But I would need to, I would need to look into that, so.
I think, I think it requires, yeah, I think it requ, I think it requires a wall between the two use types, I think.
You can have openings in it, but, you know, as long as there's some kind of fence.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. Yes, sir.
The greenway connections you have proposed, is that, would that just be stubbing at the school's property for now? Or have y'all worked with the school system?
Our, our, our plan actually shows it running south on our western property boundary. I don't know if you can see the cursor here. Yeah, there you go. And actually this, where the cursor is there south of the school, that is a City of Raleigh sewer easement. And that's where staff has directed us to make the connection in that, you know, that's a, a pretty typical place to run a greenway is along a, a existing sewer easement. And so that, that's our, that's our intent. We, we would like to have some sort of pedestrian connectivity to the, to the school, but that's yet to be determined and would need to be considered with the school.
Okay. So the Greenway Trail, it would, wouldn't actually be on the school's property. Once it leaves Yalla, it'd be down on the subdivision in their sewer easements.
That's right. We would bring it to our property line.
Yeah, so I've got two more things to ask about. Since we're on the greenways, you know, historically, we, it's been my opinion that we have kind of failed a lot on the greenways by having them run through properties.
As I conclude this presentation, just a few slides, but want to highlight some of the community engagement events, starting back last fall at the Fun Fest. This was a very informative meeting that kind of set the stage for what was one of the driving themes of this update and what we heard from the community during that Fall Fun Fest event. Also, a side note, that event's a blast, it was extremely well attended. We had quite the foot traffic to leverage and we're certainly thankful for that. But some of the key themes that came out of that initial touch point with the community was the need to start to find kind of what this ideal ratio between non-residential and residential looks like in the community. So in other words, we have the rooftops that have come into the community, right? But we want to start to really pay attention and perhaps even address some of the spillover into our neighboring municipalities. For instance, you know, we live in the town of Roseville, we also want to shop and dine here as well. So I think that was really a major takeaway from that initial touch point with the community and started to help us as the project team go to the drawing board and find innovative solutions on how we can maybe address that or at least tee up that conversation for further exploration within this comprehensive plan. Next, we went to the June Community Open House, so really not too terribly long ago. We rolled out items, including some of our individual, our 10 big ideas that kind of guided this plan development in terms of the recommendations within the comprehensive plan. We vetted those with the community as well as the future land use map. Certainly, we heard during that June 2025 meeting that folks were, for the most part, on board with how the future land use map took place. Dare I say, it is a bit more robust than the current future land use map in terms of the different future land use flavors that are within that document. So we heard some good takeaways with respect to the future land use map at that event. And then just taking us back earlier this month, this was an opportunity for, we came to this very room with quite a few boards for the community to interact with, and this was an opportunity for us to roll out actually our individual recommendations or our concrete steps on how to achieve the vision of Roseville 2050. The community was asked to interact with these boards by placing a dot on where they ranked them in terms of priority, which we'll talk about in just a moment at the end of this presentation with respect to how the framework for implementation is set up in this document. And up there on the right, before I jump and proceed to my slide, wanted to just make note that timeframe for the community survey, that period was from October 2024 to the beginning of 2025 this year, and we had in total 236 fully submitted survey responses from the community. And so all of this gathering of community input led us to creating ultimately the vision, the guiding vision that would really provide the rails for the rest of this planning process, and that is the Roseville 2050 vision, which I'll take just a second to read that if you all have not had the opportunity to do so yet, but it speaks in a future tense. It starts by, "In 2050, the town of Roseville is a vibrant, walkable community that serves as a regional destination. The town is interconnected by a network of greenways and trails that allow access to the community's homes, parks, and entertainment options. Town growth has been strategically directed to supply a balance of residential, non-residential, and civic services to ensure the community provides its residents with a live, work, play lifestyle. All are welcome in Roseville, and the community's diversity and people are celebrated through annual events." So now I want to jump to our Roseville 2050 focus areas. We have four focus areas that were each informed by that vision statement, and I think you all will be able to find the nexus there, but starting with our transportation focus area, which was really informed by challenges in terms of existing conditions and opportunities looking forward through that 2050 lens. Next, economic development, that focus area, land use and housing, parks, recreation, and community character. These focus areas each had their own respective recommendations underneath them. So that essentially is telling you all or giving you some insight if you haven't spent too much time with the document yet, which obviously I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. But these focus areas really guide recommendations. So in other words, this document has different, these four different baskets in which recommendations live to address transportation challenges, economic development challenges, land use and housing, and parks and recreation. So again, just to share a little bit about the insight to the creation of the implementation framework of this document. So I just pulled four here. These all four were considered to be high priority recommendations, so I wanted to pull these, for example, from our touch point with the community, our open house earlier this month. So starting with our transportation focus area, an example of a recommendation would be strategically updating the town's land development ordinance to limit subdivision driveways onto Main Street. We heard some interconnectivity concerns, and so addressing that concern through a cross-access corridor angle was explored there and actually presented forward and brought forward as a planned recommendation. Next, for our economic development component, we understand that there was a big emphasis from the community on aesthetics, visual appearance of non-residential development. And so there was also an opportunity that was recognized by the project team as well as leadership in the community at large, that we have some vacant tracks at our 401 gateway into town. And when we think about the future vision for these parcels of land, we want to be very picky. We want to be strategic with how we go into implementing those development on those tracks. And so that's where this recommendation was really born, that's the origin of it, and that is to establish a 401 gateway district through small area plans, so other processes within themselves that include involvement from the community, of course, stakeholders, which also include folks from the development community and town leadership. So developing that area, that 401 gateway entrance into town strategically, and we can talk about that more on the future land use map slide. So next, for land use and housing, that would be to provide context-sensitive infill downtown, AKA obviously Main Street, to ensure land use and design compatibility. So again, ensuring that consistency among adjacent land uses, obviously to kind of address that other economic development-oriented piece to kind of, we have the rooftops, right? Again, that idea of balancing residential and non-residential growth. Now, how do we kind of incentivize new business downtown and also make it flavorful when we do so? And now lastly, onto our parks and recreation focus area. With a growing community, both north, southeast, and west, all areas of Roseville are growing, a need to identify and really develop a parkland acquisition policy to strategically place some of these parks was brought up throughout not only engagement events, but we had some write-in survey responses as well speaking to that concept. So in other words, let's plan for parks where folks can access them not only by vehicle but also within a walking and biking distance of them. So again, just for example, recommendations from Roseville 2050. Okay, certainly one of my last slides, but not least, obviously a component of the comprehensive land use plan, which this board will use quite a bit, and that is the future land use map. So you can see here, we have several flavors of future land use, which I'm happy to, I won't be labor them, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the board may have on some of these designations in just a moment. But starting with our business and innovation corridor, that's going to be that 401 gateway area that, again, we intend through the recommendation, the community intends to develop it via small area planning. Next, civic, that's going to be your lighter blue color, if you can make it out on the slide here. Those are going to be your institutional uses, so your schools, some of your religious institutions and so forth. Commercial center, so that's going to be kind of your catch-all for your non-residential retail-type development that exists outside of really the core of Roseville, that is Main Street. And then community commercial, and I'm recognizing this slide may be a little tough if you don't have it on the screen in front of you to see some of these colors. That's going to be your northern coral segment, if you will, in the northern area of town. That's a very unique future land use designation and intended to really blend that aspiration from the community to, again, balance some of the residential growth with non-residential, but also continuing to build Roseville's identity around a recreation community. So really what this community commercial designation intends to accomplish is to provide commercial land uses that are actually walkable. So as opposed to having, you know, a parking lot in front of each retail establishment, having a maybe hidden or centralized parking lot where folks can actually get out of their car and walk from business to business. So somewhat similar to a downtown concept in terms of how you access retail. Next, downtown residential, that's going to be all of the kind of almost purplish, purple-maroonish parcels surrounding downtown, going to be very hard to make those out on the screen here. But those are going to be some of your more established, single-family homes around downtown, so those will certainly remain as appropriate uses within that designation, but also intended to provide some of multifamily option within those areas. And then our mixed residential community, that's going to be a majority, I say a majority, probably split evenly with rural, residential, and agricultural, but that orange color, that's going to be really your most common variety of housing types, but at a medium-density level, that's your mixed residential community. I'll jump now to the greens since we just addressed it, but that's going to be your less dense, right, one-acre lots and supporting agricultural operations in the green color. Town center, that's going to be, of course, and I actually have an excerpt here, really downtown, the downtown designation makes up all the Main Street corridors, so downtown Roseville effectively. So just to give you a little bit of a glimpse, too, and we can talk more about these character areas at the conclusion of my presentation when we open it up for questions, but just to give you a glimpse of kind of building on that idea of making this document that of a usable one and a tool as opposed to something that really sits on a shelf, these snips here on your right-hand side of the screen of just the downtown future land use designation and those different criteria associated with that designation are on the right-hand side of the screen, and that's actually one cut sheet within the document towards the tail end of the document in the future land use section. So in other words, if I were a developer or a property owner in a certain part of the community and I wanted to learn more really about what the downtown designation represents or expects in terms of future land use, I would be able to simply cut out this page and have right there in front of me all I need to know about that designation. So again, with keeping the idea in mind of making this a usable document. And so now, I know this is not news to you all, but just to briefly touch on another component of this implementation framework within this plan, that's the implementation element, which outlines the planning board's role and responsibility as well as the community at large, elected officials and staff in the town of Roseville, but that is through decisions, just as you certainly did in the last case that was brought before you. That is to reference the comprehensive plan's future land use map, that's actually a specific recommendation within this plan as well. But through every deliberation of a rezoning, for instance, that's brought before you, continue to reference the comprehensive land use plan from a consistency standpoint and simultaneously monitor action item implementation progress with staff, being curious and asking staff, how are we with respect to our high priority action items? Are we rolling a few of those out, but also does this rezoning request before us this evening intend to further any action items that we've outlined within our comprehensive plan? And so that really speaks to that second bullet. So I'll jump to next steps now and then open it up for any questions that you all may have from the project team. Certainly do my best to answer those this evening. But tonight, the team is seeking a planning board recommendation, hoping you all have had time to spend with this document and anything that you'd like to learn more about. Hopefully, I'm the person to answer those questions, we also have staff here as well. And then looking forward to the October 7th Board of Commissioners and Public Hearing to hopefully have an adoption hearing on the comprehensive plan, and last but not least, certainly begin implementing this plan, excuse me. So with that, happy to jump back in time to any of these slides, discuss any information within the document that you'd like to hear a little more detail on, but thank you for letting me be here with you this evening. Thank you for letting us spend the last 14 months really with the community. It's been a pleasure. So I'll open it up now for any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Feldman?
I do not.
Right ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Go back to the map.
Oh, sure.
On the side of the 401 past the, like, where the high school and all that stuff, you have all that big green areas, or any thoughts about, I mean, you've looked on one side, it's a ton of orange, so it's residential, so it's just row and row after housing, nothing for parks, nothing for commercial, or very little for commercial. I don't mind going into Roseville, I do right now because the road is still a mess, but having something nearby in those areas to attract that type of park area, light commercial, like, it doesn't have to be as intense as downtown, but crossing over the 401 is not a lot of fun unless you're on a true destination.
Sure. Now, that was certainly something that was brought up throughout plan development, especially when it came time to start putting pen to paper on the future land use map. But just so I'm clear on the area, we're talking about east Roseville, where majority predominantly, you're going to find that rural agricultural.
Right now, there's a lot of big farms out there.
Right. And that is due to the nature of the watershed overlay out that way, which really limits any development that would require public water and sewer. City Rowley will not extend infrastructure that way, to my knowledge.
More north of the watershed, because the watershed goes up towards 96 and a little bit south of that, isn't it?
It's almost everything east of Everett and Young and north of that, almost. Once you get to the high school side, it gets a little bit weird, but a lot of it still...
Buffalo Creek, because they're building there, but north of Buffalo Creek.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Now, the Wake County plan does have a lot of little pockets that Wake County, outside of Roseville's planning district, that they have a lot of little pockets for those kind of stuff you're talking about. So Wake County has plans like that. I just don't know if our ETJ stretches out far enough to kind of...
Well, because I'm looking at the properties that are building all around me right now, right? There's the Point, Callas Falls, a couple more, so you have, I think they counted it like 900,000 homes plus townhomes in that area.
Yeah.
They're not here.
Right.
There's no homes yet, right? But we've got to represent what they're going to see when they finally move in.
Right.
Because right now, they don't have a vote because there's a lot of houses.
Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, you bring up a great question, and thank you, Mr. Verstegen, for pointing out the fact that our, this study area for this comprehensive land use plan, and actually what you see on the screen there for the future land use map, does extend outside of Roseville's current planning jurisdiction, that is the ETJ and corporate limits, of course. And while yes, Wake County does identify a few commercial crossroads, really, if you will, out in the eastern portion of the county in our study area, really the limitation and kind of driving factor behind the decision to leave that area as predominantly rural agricultural in nature and less than single-family housing was due to the fact that public utilities are going to be a constraint.
Could you explain briefly what you've envisioned the main difference between, like, the commercial center and the community commercial developments are?
Absolutely. So starting with, if I may, the commercial center, that's going to be predominantly your, what you think of as a conventional standalone on an individual lot, 10,000 square foot, maybe multi-tenant commercial building, but that's accessed with the front parking lot or maybe the parking lot strategically located, but almost your single-user commercial development would make up that more general commercial center designation. That coral color, again, community commercial, don't have the snip of, within the document, if you all have access to that in your packet, within the commercial center future land use designation, we do have a precedent image as we do for the other future land use designations, and it's really intended to be a walkable commercial use. So think of a, I don't know, folks have mixed feelings on some commercial developments, I'm hesitant to name one, but think of a Fenton development in Cary, where you have a larger parking lot that you park in, right? And you get out of your car and you're able to access 10, 20, 30 stores by foot. So that, the intent, again, behind that very unique future land use designation that you really won't come across in a comprehensive plan commonly, that, again, that was to marry the two ideas behind Roseville, starting to gain recognition as a walkable community via success with its Greenway implementation in many cases, and marrying that with the idea of balancing non-residential to residential. So again, joining the two ideas of providing a walkable and commercial experience was the intent behind that designation. So it does have very specific design criteria associated with it that a commercial center, for instance, would not necessarily, right? So again, as you're, let's say a rezoning this forward, just speaking hypothetically, within that community commercial designation, and it is for the kind of ideal or model use that I just explained that would fit into that general commercial center designation. It's a single-use 10,000-square-foot building, we'll just use that to continue to run, for example, accessed by a front parking lot, and you get out, you park in front of the establishment, go in, get back in your car, drive next door to the next business. That might be looked at with a touch of scrutiny within this designation because it certainly wouldn't be checking the ideal boxes for the commercial center. If I may, just add one more point, and I may have given you too much information on this, I apologize if I did. But you might be wondering, well, why just that segment of town seems oddly specific? Well, if you'll take note of some of the green, more the dark green, parks and conservation, excuse me, character area, that's going to be existing town parks as well as Greenway infrastructure. There is currently a gap between the northern segment of Greenway within the town and that Greenway segment just south of that community commercial coral color, again, looking at the northern part of town. So a lot of these parcels are undeveloped along Chalk Road is specifically the road I'm referring to. And so with that comes an opportunity to not only encourage commercial land use, but also encourage a connecting multimodal infrastructure, Greenway infrastructure there. That'll be all I touch on on that subject, but it's a specific one, I think it does warrant a bit of a description at times, but the hope is that all of that is covered within these individual cut sheets for each future land use designation.
Thank you.
You mentioned that we only received 236 survey responses, was that a concern for your team?
236 survey responses is not necessarily a low response rate. I think the survey was, and I'll go back to that slide, I think the survey was hosted live for around four months, and that was just due to maybe not, at the initial release, pushing it out as hard as we could on social media to get folks to engage with that. I think we saw our biggest uptick right at the October 2024 Fall Fun Fest event, when we had a, actually a news article, forgetting the source, it's just not coming to mind at the time, but actually promoted the survey as well. So that in conjunction with the town social media and efforts to push the survey gave us that uptick and about, I think, 150 responses in a period of, don't quote me, but it was less than a week. So we received over half of our responses in less than a week. So my takeaway there is that those 236 community members, all who wanted to be involved in the process were through that survey.
But is it fair that we are saying use social media when a great portion of our community is not on social media?
Well, and that's a very fair point, because I think as part of any good or successful engagement event or engagement process throughout a comprehensive plan is to try and reach the community through more angles than just one. So again, in the age of where technology dominates, I certainly know of a demographic and of a portion of the community that prefers to communicate their thoughts at the comfort of their own home, maybe a community open house that we also hosted three of is not a setting for them. And so that was really the intent behind offering these virtual opportunities, AKA the community survey, and community open houses, which were also well-attended throughout the process.
I just think we could have done a better job with reaching more people.
Let's take a look, the one slide you had on recommendations shows established the 401 gateway.
Yes, sir.
So, and I'm pretty sure we had established that years ago when the bypass was being built, was Lewis Berry Road to Highway 96, Sibulin Road. I'm just wondering, is this, I guess maybe a question for staff or something to take to the board, what is, I'm just trying to see where the recommendation or where the difference is from what we established years ago.
Sure. I might not be the best suited to speak on the history of any planning efforts.
Yeah, it's just a comment to look into, I think, in the future, because I don't know if that's changed from several years ago or if that's still the established, but that was that. The second question was strategically limit subdivision driveways onto Main Street. I know, I think more the north side of the Main Street is still DOT-regulated instead of town-regulated, so I don't know what we could do to get the town to have more input or more of a say-so on that north side of town instead of DOT being the final decision.
Sure. So when you're at the liberty of the Department of Transportation, I know access controlling can get tricky, and I'm not a traffic engineer, don't claim to be one, we do have one in the room. So my happenstance, right?
I wasn't going to put Matt on the spot tonight.
Certainly, I'd be happy to talk to him. I'd be curious to learn your thoughts, but that's a great point. I think there's a level of communication, though, that can take place between the local jurisdiction, the town, and the Department of Transportation to convey priorities and preferences with respect to access of maybe undeveloped parcels that are along that DOT-maintained segment, just to make sure that planning efforts align. But that's my, maybe my high-level answer, not super detailed, but happy to...
Sure, if you have some information, I think it'd be great. Not to put you on the spot, Matt, but we'll put you on the spot.
Yeah, we'll take it. Awesome. Happy to address that a little bit of color. So access management is a big part of DOT's job, right? Driveways are the one thing that they, like, actually have physical control over, so they actually regulate them pretty intensely. The good news is, is if you're looking to limit the number of driveways on Main Street, that aligns with what DOT would like to do. Access management means limiting the number of driveways and making sure that they're spaced appropriately, right? Because if we have a lot of driveways that have a lot of traffic in kind of close succession, that leads to operational problems, congestion, right? Also, safety issues. So for those two reasons, DOT, you know, like, their main intent is to limit, right? Now, you have to provide access to a property owner, right? So say if there was a single-family home and they needed a driveway because Main Street was their only place where they could have a driveway, well, then you got to provide them one, right? But then you often get into the question of, okay, does it need to be a regular driveway where you can make left turns in and out? Can it be right turns in only, or can we do what's called like a leftover where you have left turns in and then you can't make a left turn out, right? So there's various different things that you can do, but if you're trying to, if one of the goals of the plan is to limit the number of driveways along Main Street, that's generally the intent of NC DOT for both the operational and safety benefits that I talked to earlier. Yep.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Any other discussions on the comprehensive land use plan? Floor is open for a motion then, there are no other questions or discussions.
What would be the motion on this?
I think they had a recommended motion in the couple of slides back.
That's right. So we are tonight, this evening, seeking a recommendation from this board to determine really how the...
I think it was on the memo.
Yep, the plan proceeds to the October 7th Board of Commissioners.
Chairman, I make motion. Motion to recommend to the Town Board Commissioners approval of the Roseville 2050 comprehensive plan.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
No, second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Thank you all.
All right, on to the communications, the planning directors' report.
Good evening, thank you. One membership update for the planning board, Ms. Krista Vergis...
Ms. Krista Vergis has requested to leave the board, retire from the board. So she will no longer be a member and will be looking to fill that spot this fall as soon as possible. So that is one item. We also wanted to just bring up the housing plan, which was before the board last month. We would like to bring that back on September 22nd for another presentation, potentially with the consultant who drafted the plan, but certainly with some feedback from the consultant in regards to the comments that we, we received on that. So we definitely want to come back, maybe explain the scope in the beginning a little bit more and what it was intended to do. I know during the discussion, we kind of got into that, the scope and what it was intended to do versus the, the review and the initial comments on it. So just to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And if the board would like to do another motion for a, a recommendation to the board at that time, they can, if they wish to, you know, maintain their original motion, that's perfectly fine. But we'd like to give that another crack. So we'll be bringing that back on September 22nd, yeah, a little earlier next month. Other than that, don't really have much to report. We're settling into our new staff positions in Planning Department. We do have a position out there advertised for an administrative assistant person. I think I've received like 75 submitted resumes for that. So we'll be hopefully hiring that person in the next 30 to six, 30 to 45 days hopefully. So then that will give us a full staff load at that point in time. Other than that, there's nothing that I can offer tonight. If there's any questions from the board, you know, again, on October 7th, the Board of Commissioners is slated to have the comprehensive plan, which you just heard tonight, and the housing plan for legislative hearings before them. So those are two big plans, obviously, for the board to consider. And the rezoning that you heard tonight will also get to them on October 7th, yes.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for staff? Thank you. Next, Town Attorney's Report.
I don't have much to say. I just want to thank the staff and team for their work on the comp plan. As you guys know, this is our guiding document. And so if it is approved in, in October, just encourage you to continue to really get familiar with the document because it's going to be guiding decisions as we go forward and, and really understanding when we make that statement that, you know, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, why it's consistent with our comprehensive plan and just in knowing it. So thank you again for the work on it and just continue to get familiar with it, our new, our new guiding plan, if it is approved.
Any questions for Town Attorney? Thank you. Any other business for the board?
I have a question for someone from the town. Can anyone elaborate on the, the opening up of the new Burlington Mills Road that changed?
I cannot, but that's certainly an answer that I could provide you all in written form tomorrow or the next day. I can ask the, the project manager for that information.
That would be good to know. Seems like they've kind of stopped temporarily.
Working on the rest of the 401.
Yeah?
All right. If there's no other business, the floor is open for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? Motion of a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.